Call the meeting to order. Well, good afternoon and welcome to May the 17th, 2021 meeting of the Gast County Board of Education. I am Jeff Ramsey, Member at Large and Chairman of the Board. At this time, I would ask the other members of the Board to introduce themselves. Mr. Dedman.
Lee Dedman, Gastonia Township.
Justin Davis, South Point Township.
Robbie Lovelace, Cherryville Township.
Doc Guthrie, Gastonia Township.
Kevin Collier, Riverbend Township.
Doc Cherry, at large member.
Steve Hall, Dallas Township.
Good to see you, Steve. Thank you. On behalf of the Board, I would like to welcome everyone to our meeting this afternoon. Our first order of business is to have our prayer and pledge of allegiance to the flag. I would like to ask Dr. Booker to lead us in the invocation and the pledge.
Thank you. Please join me. Father God, we thank you for all that you have done. We thank you for the safety of our students and our schools. We thank you for teachers who serve so admirably in our schools. We thank you for the custodians, the school nutrition workers, the bus drivers, and all these unsung heroes and our guidance counselors and social workers, psychologists. There's so many that do because you grace us with their gifts and talents. We just ask that tonight you be with us as we meet and guide us into wise decisions, and we just appreciate all that you have done and continue to do. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next order of business is to adopt the agenda. You have a proposed agenda before you. Do I hear a motion for the agenda? Ms. Cherry, motion. Second, my Mr. Dedman, any discussion? All in favor? Steve? Okay, good. The agenda is adopted. Our next order of business is to hear the good news happening in our school. Dr. Booker?
Thank you. We have a lot of good news. It is that time of the year where awards and things are being received by our schools, and want to start by congratulating Cheriville High School, which received the exemplary school award from the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. The award is presented to a school for its overall outstanding athletics program, and it is our understanding that only two schools were recognized this year, Cheriville High School and Jones Senior High in the eastern part of the state. This is a significant accomplishment, and we want to thank Principal Kevin Doran and Athletic Director Scott Harrell for their leadership, but for the whole entire coaching staff and what they do to bring this exemplary attention to Cheriville High School, and this is just further the growth that goes on in our athletic department. We also had a teacher at North Belmont Elementary, Vanessa Hairston. She is one of 26 teachers from across the state who were chosen as Kenan Fellows for the 2021-2022 academic year. In addition to receiving a $5,000 stipend, she will get to participate in 80 hours of professional development. This opportunity is available through the Kenan Institute for Engineering, Technology, and Science at NC State University, and Ms. Hairston's work as a Kenan Fellow will focus on strengthening STEM education, and this outstanding opportunity is one of many great things that are going on at North Belmont, and so we congratulate Ms. Hairston for that. We all know how important technology has been previously, and this year is no exception. We want to recognize two of our instructional technology facilitators, Abby Croft and Christie Turner. They completed the ISTI, International Society for Technology and Education Certification Program, and this program is an internationally recognized credential for educators who demonstrate mastery of the standards and technology in education. It's designed, the certification is designed to not only enhance education approach to the classroom, but to make sure that the application of the technology is relevant to what's going on in the classroom. It's a great accomplishment, and we're proud of both Ms. Croft and Ms. Turner's commitment to growing as professionals and sharing that with our entire district. You all know that we have a long tradition of moot court championships. We've had numerous state champions won throughout by our high schools, and this year is no exception. We want to congratulate Madeline Van Meter and Annie Russell because they earned first place in the state moot court championship along with teacher Anna Ballard, who is their advisor, and they were representing the Highland School of Technology. So congratulations to Highland and to both Annie and Madeline. So great honors for those. Also want to thank our education foundation. This year, they could have easily said, "We can't have smarter than a fifth grader," but they worked along with some of our technology folks and developed a way to have RU Smarter Than a Fifth Grader competition. And so we want to recognize our winners, and Beam Intermediate, who was partnered with Fleet Net, took third place. New Hope Elementary, who was partnered with Caramont Health, came in second place, and Idarankin Elementary, partnered with Clarion, took first place. And so we just appreciate all the work that went into that, and the proceeds benefit the Ron L. Insley Grant Programs for our teachers, and that's a significant, over $50,000 annually comes in through those grants, and it is mostly supported by the RU Smarter Than a Fifth Grade Program. So we appreciate all the work that went into that. To conclude our good news, want to thank all of our schools, PTOs, for the support they did to celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week. There's no better time than to pause and thank our teachers, and through this pandemic, a lot of folks have tried to say we appreciate you, but to see some of the great things that went on during this week. One school was fed lunch every day of the week. Numerous schools, the principals cooked personally manned grills to cook for them, and we just appreciate all that was done to recognize that. And so it's our understanding that Piedmont Lithium is going to have a billboard placed along Interstate 85 that salutes our teachers and thanks them for all that they have done. They will be titling them superheroes of public education, and that, I think, is an appropriate message for all that has been going on and for people to see as they ride through Gaston County, to know that we appreciate our public school teachers, and I appreciate Piedmont Lithium for stepping up and helping us celebrate our teachers. And Mr. Chairman, I could go on for a lot longer, but I will close with that.
Well, thank you for sharing, and before we go further, I just wanted to personally, on behalf on our Board of Education, thank all of our staff and leadership and all their hard work and dedication this past school year to get us to this point, where our kids took EOGs last week, we're scheduled to do exams this week, and we're going to graduate our seniors in 2021, Friday on May 28th. And it took all of us to do this, and we appreciate the Board does to, again, I know I speak for all of them, but they also know how important this has been. So thank you again. So, yes, yes.
I know that the principals do an awful lot to prepare their students for the end of grade testing, but I just want Loretta Reed to know at Woodhill Elementary School how much I enjoyed her video, the video that she shared with the Board. It was awesome, and we are looking for awesome things from Woodhill School. We congratulate you as a leader there and your teachers for the exemplary work that we saw in your videos, so we wish you well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. Well, the next on, oh, I'm sorry, Doc.
It was a good video. They know how to dance very well, too. But I got a text from a teacher at a high school today, and she sent me a screenshot of something that a teacher, that a principal did for them, and underneath she just wrote, "She is the bomb", and put a big heart. So she had done something special for her whole staff. So to piggyback on what Dr. Booker had said about Teacher Appreciation Day and all the wonderful things that they've done, you know, the principals are definitely letting their staff know that it was because of them that we're almost to the finish line, so.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, the next item on the agenda allows us the opportunity for public expression. This is the time when the Board will hear comments from our citizens about the matters of public concerns related to our school system. We do have several individuals who have signed up to be heard. Our Board set aside the first 30 minutes of our regular monthly meeting for the citizens to address the Board. Even though our meeting this afternoon is being held virtually, our Board wanted to find a way to allow as many as possible to be heard in person. We do have several signed up, and we wanted to hear from as many as we can. So if our speakers will keep this in mind as we hear from each other. Before I start, I need to read the procedures. And citizens wishing to make comments who have completed a request to speak form will be recognized by the chair and then requested to step to the microphone for their comments. Citizen will state their name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. The member of the Board does not comment on expression during public expressions. Public expressions does not allow for comments on confidential or personnel matters. The chair rules on all points of order during public expressions. So our first one, Butch Adams.
Good evening. My name is Butch Adams. I live 2070 Shannon Drive, Gastonia, North Carolina. I was a teacher, coach, and assistant principal of South Point in the 1970s. From the day that I first sat foot on campus, I was amazed at the school spirit of the South Point Red Raiders and never heard a dissenting word about the school name of the Red Raiders. The name was used with a sense of pride. At some point in the last few years, the name has offended some people who want to see the name changed. As a citizen of this wonderful country, they have a right to do so. Both sides have a right to disagree. I hope that both sides can do so with a sense of respect and of all God's people. My opinion is the name should not be changed. It could continue to be the Red Raiders. If it's done with a sense of respect, I see no problems with it any more than the Duke Blue Devils, the Virginia Cavaliers, the Fighting Irish, or the Appalachian Mountaineers. You know, you make out of it what you want to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Yes, sir. Leanna London.
Hello, good evening. My name is Leanna London, 1996 graduate Belmont, graduate of South Point High School, Belmont resident, community supporter in Belmont. I'm here tonight to share my voice in support of keeping the Red Raider mascot. I do want to stop in just a second. I'm going to add one thing. I do want to tell you guys how much I appreciate of what you've done over the last year in the school system. I have a student at Belmont Central as well as Belmont Middle, and I appreciate the support that you've given the teachers and the staff because they have done an amazing job at keeping kids safe and doing the best they can in a situation that we had no idea. I'm in a dental field, so I understand some of those things, but to have so many kids and trying to keep up with safety measures and doing the best, I just want to thank you. I try to thank our teachers and our principals that are out every morning, taking temperatures, coming in probably at times that they weren't expecting to, and staying later. But I appreciate your support and all the things that you guys did measures during this, during this time, and as we continue in the future to know what next steps. So thank you for that. What I loved about being a Red Raider was the inspiration it gave you when things are tough and when things got tougher, the teamwork it gave you when you were winning or losing, the tradition of Red Raiders before me and after, the drive that I could do hard things. Red Raider pride is really like no other. The hometown tradition, community support, alumni support is so unique to the Belmont community. Why change that? In my four years, I never saw the Red Raider used in a negative way. The Red Raider logo was used as a symbol of pride for our school and students. The spirit of competition, playing hard and being the best you could be in all ways was my definition of the Red Raider. May that definition of the Red Raider continue for many more years. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn. Sarah Kletzty.
Good evening, members of the Board. I stood here a few months ago and expressed my disbelief and frustrations with the inequity and unethical grading practices allowed in Gaston County. I'm here again in hopes you will recognize and acknowledge that the grading that happens in schools does not meet the expectations set by North Carolina Department of Public Instruction or Gaston County. I also hope you begin to make those expectations a reality. I would like you to consider this. Why do some students seem so unmotivated? Why won't they try harder? Why don't they seem to care? Perhaps it's because we've told them over and over again that they are failures. We show them we care about how well they comply. Your project was perfect, but it was late. You lose points. You passed the test, but you didn't take notes. You lose points. Your assignment showed content mastery, but you missed my deadline. You fail. So kids either become obsessed with points and will do anything for them, even cheat, or they'll just shut down. In the fall, when I could not seem to get other educated professionals to see the ethical violations and inequitable practices harming my son and many more students just like him, I started to research, and I found "Grading for Equity" by Joe Feldman, an educator with more than 20 years of experience. Feldman says, "Students who haven't been successful in school and who have experienced school as an antagonistic place where they have been tracked and told they are failing are less likely to engage and invest in that very institution than the students who have had a pattern of success." Before the pandemic, the evaluation of student performance was not accurate, not when grades reflected compliance and not content. And now, can you confidently say that student learning has not been compromised this year for any student, if not all students? If learning hasn't been the same, how can grading remain the same? Educators had no experience with education in a pandemic. Now we've had one year. It doesn't mean we don't care about our students or didn't work hard. We've probably worked harder than ever before. What it does mean is that students are being held accountable and paying the consequences, not the Board, not principals, not teachers, students. No educator is losing their job this year due to performance. It would be ludicrous because we've never done this before. So why is it okay for students to face those consequences? They've never done this before either. It's hypocritical and unethical and inequitable, and it's not new. The grading problem didn't start with a pandemic. It was exacerbated by it. My request is simple. DPI and Gaston County expect teachers to assign grades based on content mastery, not on time management or note-taking skills, not on participation or effort. Content, that is all. And I understand, it's never been done that way. But if teachers can hold students to their expectations, you should hold teachers to yours. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca LeClary. Not here. Okay. Clara Merlin. Nobby, I'm going to get hurt.
Good evening, Gaston Board of Education. Thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Dr. Clara Merlin Noblick, and I'm an assistant professor at UNC Charlotte in the Cato College of Education. I'm also a former high school counselor, and I teach and supervise school counselors at UNC Charlotte. In fact, I recently have enjoyed supervising several school counseling interns in your district at East Gaston High School and Holbrook Middle School. I've also spent the last six years as a professor researching school counselors and how we can better support K-12 students in their mental health and academic achievement. And I'm speaking to you today to request that you change the mascot of South Point High School in order to improve the mental health and academic achievement of current and future students in your district. I speak as someone that conducts research for a living. I read research for a living, and I can say unequivocally that when students feel as though their schools do not accept their cultural identities, they do worse academically. We have data and evidence and knowledge showing this to be true. Students are more likely to experience poorer mental health when they experience discrimination and lack school belonging. In turn, this depression and anxiety in particular can be associated with poor academic outcomes. Mental health and academic achievement suffer when students do not feel like who they are is welcomed in their school. At South Point High School, a mascot mocking Native Americans does not welcome Native American students. In fact, it suggests that they're not welcome and that their community is worth ridiculing. It conveys an unfortunate suggestion that the school, perhaps its educators, perhaps its community, may be racist. And furthermore, in keeping such a mascot, educators risk suggesting to students of other backgrounds that their identities are not welcomed either. The Red Raider mascot conveys a threatening message to students who may identify as Black or Latino or Asian or Asian American, and it also worries students who could identify as gay or lesbian or immigrants or those who speak more than one language. To all of these students coming from marginalized backgrounds, the mascot may indicate that because of their identities, they are not welcome. As educators, if we truly want to support our students and their academic achievement, we can't ignore this mascot. So I ask you to create a committee to investigate and replace the mascot at South Point High School. Your current and future students will truly be better for it, and I know that's why all of us are here to begin with, to support the students in Gaston County schools. I believe you have a choice to better support these students by removing this mascot, and I humbly ask that you do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Olivia Huffman. Ryan Sims.
Go ahead. Good afternoon. My name is Ryan Sims. My address can be found on my form. I'm here today, along with many other people that you'll see and hear from, to speak on South Point High School's mascot. If you're tired of hearing about it, I would recommend taking action regarding it. If you're tired of hearing about it, think about how tired Native Americans are with experiencing stereotypical misrepresentations of their storied histories. If you're tired of hearing about it, think about how tired all of our community members are who are adversely affected by it. Truthfully, you shouldn't be tired of it, and I would hope that you aren't. Anybody listening to this speech, I would hope that they aren't. If you're hearing a group fighting against racial injustices, whether you have close ties to this issue or not, and you're tired of it, then that's not ties to this issue or not, and you're tired of it, then that's not a good sign. Your morals may need to be reassessed. If tradition held any moral weight over fighting injustices, we'd most likely still be living in an excessively hateful world ridden with prejudice injustices. Tradition holds no moral weight over justice. On top of this, to anybody listening to this speech, sitting on the fence and being neutral about an issue like this isn't an option. Injustices throughout our world and our history, whether big or small, have never been helped by people who remain neutral and sat on the fence. If you think the civil rights movement or any other movement throughout our history was led by people who sat on the fence, you're sadly mistaken. If you're able to sit idly by and ignore this issue of basic human rights, you may need to evaluate the privilege you have in this world. Nobody deserves to be ridiculed or targeted by a derogatory mascot or team name. I'm not a Native American, nor am I a person of color. I, whether or not I am aware of it, am privileged when it comes to this issue. What I am, however, is a student at South Point High School. As a student of South Point, what I can tell you is this. I have seen firsthand how this mascot can negatively affect our student body. I have seen how this mascot has alienated my friends, how it has made them and their existences feel like nothing more than a token to be paraded about. I can't imagine that feeling, and I don't wish it upon anybody. And I have also seen, as a student at South Point High School, how this mascot has affected my feelings towards my own school. Truthfully, I'm a proud student at South Point. I am proud of our student body. I'm proud of our staff. I'm proud of our athletics department. I'm proud of our arts department. I'm proud of our community, but I'm not a proud Red Raider. I will never be a proud Red Raider. The deeply insensitive nature of our mascot and team name should not be excused, and the mascot needs to be changed. There is no excuse about it. There's no way around it. It needs to be changed. Retire the Red Raider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Natalie O'Connor, and I'm a senior at South Point, and my address is on my form.
Okay, thank you.
When I first moved to Belmont, I felt really uncomfortable when I was faced with the Red Raider mascot. Moving to a new area where a lot of kids didn't look like me and was frightening enough, and having, seeing this institution itself endorse this image made me feel even more alienated. I knew the mascot was wrong, but my peers who were born and raised here said it's just a mascot and that we're honoring them. But is this how we honor Native Americans? Reducing their culture and heritage to a high school football mascot? As a student, I know that this mascot affects me and many of my peers, my Native American peers, my peers of color. I know you, as educators, want to create a safe learning environment for all students, so I please ask you to truly think about all of your students and how they are affected by your decision or lack thereof. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is V. Hong. My address is on my form. I am an Asian American student at South Point High School, and I'm here to speak against my school's mascot, the Red Raider. To me, this mascot is insensitive, distasteful, ignorant, and embarrassing. Racial mascots are unacceptable and always have been. Many other schools and sports teams have been working to change theirs for years. For example, from 1867 up until 1981 in Pekin, Illinois, Pekin Community High School's football team was called the Chinks. That's 114 years of this school being called the Chinks. During the efforts to change the name, the school conducted a vote within the student body and keeping the name won by landslide twice. The majority claimed a lot of things and used rhetoric that may sound familiar to you. They said that the name honored us and that their intentions were good. They said that the decision to eventually change the name was a result of political correctness. That was in 1981, 40 years ago. I don't see the situation surrounding our mascot to be much different. The Red Raider is a caricature of a race with stereotypical features in a derogatory name. It exists in a community that is mostly white, where most people don't want to address it. The difference is that Native American voices are still being ignored, even in 2021. But I don't get to ignore this issue when I go home today. I am not Native American, but I care about this issue because this mascot is a relic preserved by the same legacy of colonialism and imperialism that oppresses me, my family, and my friends of color. It's the same legacy that will oppress my children, my nieces, and my nephews because it is children who walk through the halls of the school and see that mascot every day. For most of them, it teaches them that it's okay to reduce people of races other than their own to a set of stereotypes. For children like me, it teaches them that their community does not value them as people but as tokens. Racial mascots are not honoring, and saying that they are doesn't help to fix the years of oppression and prejudice that created them in the first place. What does help is putting forth the effort to undo the racist ideology that they instill into communities by tearing these mascots down. That's what's honorable. Retire the Red Raider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again. As you may remember, my name is Tori Jenkins, and I am a senior at Gaston Day School. I'm sure you all know what I'm here to discuss, the stain on our community, a hurtful reminder to Native people that their culture and existence is a joke to some people. South Point's mascot is, quite frankly, disgusting in that it completely mocks Indigenous people. I've heard some excuses about how the name Red Raider refers to heroes and is an honorable title. It takes one minute of Google and critical thinking to disprove that. This is a racist caricature of Native people and nothing more. There is no honor in mocking people, and it is incredibly insensitive to suggest otherwise. Why is the response to Native people saying that this mascot is harmful to dig your heels in and cover your ears like a child in an argument? How can you continue to stay silent like we haven't been pleading to you for months for change? Every month, you sit here and listen to us tell you that the mascot is harming Native people, that they have denounced any mascot, costume, or other harmful depiction of themselves, yet you go along with the meeting like we said nothing at all. What will it take for you to change? What will it take for you to listen and actually take action? Last meeting after I spoke, I was approached by an adult man in the lobby who then proceeded to try to bait me and other speakers into an argument over a Facebook post he cited, very reputable. The post claimed that there was a school mascot titled the Evergreens that people were upset over because it was offensive to trees. He cited this as a sort of gotcha moment. I laughed at him. A grown man stood in front of me and compared living, breathing human beings with feelings to trees. I said, "You can't be serious." He replied, "Well, it's a slippery slope. I'm sure you've all heard that before." Is this really the mindset we're going up against, full of logical fallacies that human beings are equitable to trees? Because I don't know how to explain that they are not equitable, why you should value human beings over tradition. Nevertheless, we stand again imploring you to change the community for the better. There have been countless other high schools and even national teams that have changed their mascots due to the racist imagery, yet we are lagging behind. Our community prides itself on a sense of unity and caring, but this mascot does not represent those values in any way. Use your seat to make a positive change in the community and retire the Red Raider. Thank you.
Thank you. Rosina, and I'm going to let her pronounce her last name. No, Ava, yeah, there's two Avas.
Hi, my name is Ava. My school and address are on the form.
Can you give me your last name? There's two Avas.
Oh, sorry. My name is Ava Clarkson.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I believe we should retire the Red Raider mascot at South Point High School because it's racist, it creates a toxic environment for the students at South Point High, and it dehumanizes Indigenous people. Racism is never acceptable. You, the school board, understands that. So, that being said, you should pay attention to the disgusting mistreatment of Indigenous people across the country. Eighty-four percent of Native American women experience violence in their lifetime. That is 10 times the national average, not to mention the serious history behind Native land being stolen and colonized. After all of this, the least we can do is listen. Listen to the Native people who fight to see change. If Native Americans are telling you that the mascot is offensive, it's offensive. End of story. After centuries of Native American voices being silenced, they deserve to be heard, so be the ones that truly hear them out. Schools should always be seen as a safe environment for students. In fact, one of the responsibilities that comes with being a school board member is constantly trying to make sure that your schools are as safe and accepting as possible. But how can this environment be achieved at a school with a mascot so shameful that some students are too embarrassed to even associate with it? On April 9th, me and the people speaking here today went behind the South Point High School football field to protest the mascot during a football game. Plenty of students and parents mocked us, yelled at us, and insulted us. This is the kind of behavior that the Red Raider mascot has encouraged. Stop for a moment and realize that Native Americans don't deserve to be shut down after expressing the pain that this mascot has brought them. The dehumanization that this mascot propagates is appalling. Over 1,500 Native organizations have expressed the ways that Native mascots are dehumanizing. They have also called for the removal of Native mascots. Indigenous students at South Point High School only make up 0.1% of total students. That being said, this mascot is an unfair representation of the school. It makes a mockery of Indigenous culture and enables racism at South Point High School. To end my statement, I would like to say that you, the school board, now has a chance to be on the side of change. Do with this information what you want, but keep in mind that we won't stop advocating until change happens. And if it doesn't happen now, then I guess we'll see you at the next board meeting. I would like to use the last 30 seconds of my time to ask when this matter will be settled with a vote.
Go ahead.
Do you know when this, like, there will be a vote for this?
We don't comment. If you wanted to finish up, you can. You've got 16 seconds.
Okay. Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. No more. Thank you for your comments and your continued concern to Gaston County schools. Although the board does not typically respond during the period for the public comment, we do want to hear from the public, and we direct staff to work on those issues that need to be addressed. Thank you for your comments. The next item on the agenda is approval and correction of minutes. Ms. Cherry, motion? Second, Mr. Moore. Any discussion? All in favor. The minutes are approved. Next on the agenda, allow a report from our superintendent with the COVID-19 update. This is the information item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Our COVID-19 update will focus on, as it has in the past, the Strong Schools North Carolina Public Health Toolkit. And this is the toolkit that was published back in the summer and has been the guiding light for us as we have operated our schools. This next slide you have seen many times. This is how we began operation in August, and these are the things that we still have in place as we operate our schools today. The next slide, this is the new change. As you all know, Governor Cooper Friday afternoon announced the relaxing of a number of requirements, but in announcing those requirements, he excluded schools, both public and private, along with a number of other entities, from some of the reduction. And this writing here speaks to that we will still, in all public and non-public schools, all workers, teachers, guests, other adults, and children five years or older must wear face coverings when indoors at all time. And it goes through to give some examples. So, we still have our mask mandate. This next slide is one that highlights page 16 of the Strong Schools Public Health Toolkit. This has been one that has been extremely challenging for our school district since we went into Plan A. We had talked about with the lack of social distancing it would bring into play the need to quarantine students because if you did not have six feet spacing, then it threw. And a lot of folks wanted to read the first paragraph and talk about, well, after five days, after seven days. But the third paragraph clearly stated that if you could not maintain social distancing, it was a 14-day, and we understand the difficulty of that. It was hard on our schools. It was hard on our teachers, not having their students in front of them and trying to prepare the work. That has not changed, and in speaking with the ABC Collaborative last week, they don't anticipate any relaxation of quarantine protocols in the near future. Obviously, as the country continues to improve, we hope to see that, but we know that for the rest of school, those will be in place. So, as we look ahead, face coverings will continue to be required indoors. Quarantine protocols will remain unchanged. But the governor did change regulations related to athletics and outdoor facilities and them being open. And it's my pleasure to let you know today that your high school principals called a meeting and got together and talked through graduation. And their collective decision is that we would like to try and have one graduation and not two on Friday night. We had, as you all know, we had done a cohort A and B graduation plan. They believe that they can operate the cohorts together with the new guidelines, and so they will be contacting their respective school communities to let their parents, their seniors, know about how they will operate on that Friday night with a new time and for one ceremony. And I think everyone would give them a standing ovation for that. And I just appreciate that they reacted quickly. They had the weekend to digest what was going on, and they've come together with that solution. So, I think that's great news and a great way to say that's our COVID-19 update for this week. Mr. Chair.
I think we all agree that is really good news. I know the parents and the seniors are really excited to hear that news. The next item on the agenda is the report from the Operation Committee. The Operation Committee is made up of Lee Dedman, who is chair of the committee, Doc Cherry, Kevin Collier, and Brent Moore. Mr. Dedman, who's?
Chair of Mr. Cherry.
Thank you.
Of course. Okay. The Operations Committee met on Monday, May 3rd at 4:00 here in the Central Board Room. Our committee consists of, as Chairman Resnick just indicated, Lee Dedman, Kevin Collier, myself, and Brent Moore. Our agenda and discussion included the following. Chris Hall, who's project manager, briefly updated us on school business system modernization, also known as SBSM. That's been an ongoing project. It's state-funded by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. And basically, we're getting, we're putting Oracle to bed, and it will be replacing our district's primary human resources, finance, and payroll systems. We're scheduled to go live with Phase 1 of this project on July 1 with the Finance Department and on October 1 with the Human Resources and Payroll Department. And from what we've been told, it is really going to be a major improvement. Going to take a little while to get adjusted, but I think everybody's going to really enjoy the efficiency and productivity that they're going to gain from SBSM. Our Executive Director of Human Resources, Joey Clinton, shared that the HR department held a virtual job fair on May 5. Educational Partners International, or EPI, teachers have been given an additional year from five to six years of employment due to COVID-19. So, end-of-year tasks have started for the HR department. Approximately 119 employees signed up for transfers, and then the second round of interviews for principals took place on May 6th and 7th. Morgan Houchard, who is our Executive Director of Auxiliary Services, updated us on the following information. Our 14 summer school sites will offer meals to all students on each site, whether they are attending camp or not. So, that's something that we're very proud and excited about, that we'll be feeding a lot of children this summer. Groundbreaking for Stinger Park, which is in Bessemer City, took place on April 21st. Any work that would be disruptive to the flow of school will not start until after the students leave for the summer break. Starting in August, Gaston County Schools Transportation will operate on a two-tier tran- transportation model. Because elementary schools operate from 7:30 to 2:30, and middle and high schools from 8:30 to 3:30, a two-tier model will work quite well. The benefits of this model will allow single bus runs for all students in schools, and students will have less wait time for their bus, as well as many drivers will be given more time, and some will even be able to qualify for benefits that they've not been able to receive in the past. So we're very excited about being able to incorporate this process. About 96% of the new Belmont Middle School is complete. We've received the certi-, yeah, excuse me, Certificate of Occupancy for the building, which means we have the keys. Furniture and graphics are being installed at this time, and overall, the school looks great, and if anybody's written by it, the outside is an indication that the inside looks even better. Associate Superintendent and Chief Financial Officer Gary Hoskins presented information on ESER 2 and ESER 3 funding. He also explained how the unused 2018 bond funds would be dispersed for renovations and repairs. And then finally, contracts for Forest View High Drainage, East Gaston Drainage, Bessemer City Middle and High School paving, and Bessemer City landscaping were all recommended for approval from the board and will appear on the consent agenda. Our next meeting is scheduled for June 7 at 4:00 here in the Central Office.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. The next item on the agenda is the report from the Curriculum and Instruction Committee. The members of the committee are Justin Davis, Steve Hall, Robbie Lovelace, and Ms. Dot Guthrie is the chair of that committee. Ms. Guthrie? All right. Thank you.
Gaston County Schools Board of Education Curriculum.
An instruction committee met on May 3rd, 2021. Members present were Dot Guthrie, Robbie Lovelace, Steve Hall, Justin Davis, Dot Cherry, and Jeff Ramsey. The meeting was called to order at 12:00 PM. Principal Glenn Cook shared highlights about his school, Pleasant Ridge Elementary. Pleasant Ridge Elementary has recently been honored as a National Beta Club School of Merit, a National Beta Club School of Distinction, and a National Padilla School. Staff presented information in regards to utilizing an online registration platform for athletics to remove possible ineligibilities, consolidate all forms on one site, and provide a real-time checklist for the coaches and athletes. The Department for Middle School Instruction shared an overview of how staff will begin the review and selection process to adopt a Core Math 1 curriculum resource. Staff gave the committee a K-12 Social Studies update. To implement the new standards, a K-12 curriculum team will construct units of study with benchmark dates. The Department for High School Instruction shared an update on career and college-ready graduates, known as CCRG. The state requires all high schools to provide CCRG Enhanced English to any rising senior with an unweighted GPA of 2.2 to 2.799. CCRG Enhanced English 12 fulfills the graduation requirement. Academic Services shared information about the 21st Century Grant and Junior Grade Books. Aspire after-school locations will be at HH Beam, Pleasant Ridge, and Lingerfelt Elementary Schools during the 2021-22 school year. An application has been submitted on behalf of Woodhill Elementary to become our fourth 21st Century program. During the 2021-22 school year, the academically and intelligently gifted, known as AIG, department will utilize junior grade books resources in grades 6 through 8, AIG English Language Arts, known as ELA, classrooms. This is an opportunity to increase the rigor of our AIG ELA program. This item is on the consent agenda for approval. The meeting adjourned at 1:37 PM. The next committee meeting is scheduled for June 7, 2021, at the Central Office at 12:00 noon.
Thank you, Ms. Lovelace, and thank both committees for all your hard work this past school year on behalf of our students, staff, and parents. Y'all got a lot done through time. Next on your agenda is Gaston College Board of Trustees appointment. This is the information item, and Mr. Higgins is joining us.
Good afternoon, Chairman Ramsey, Vice Chairman Cherry, members of the board, and Superintendent Booker. Today, we are presenting information to you regarding the Board of Education's appointment to the Gaston College Board of Trustees. Each year, the Board of Education has the responsibility of appointing one member to serve a four-year term on the Gaston College Board of Trustees. The person chosen by the board for the four-year term will serve beginning July 1, 2021, and continuing through June 30, 2025. Ideally, the person appointed to the Gaston College Board of Trustees should possess knowledge of community needs, awareness of the roles of the North Carolina Community College System and K-12 education, and understanding of the relationship between county commissioners and funding for public education. When the board appoints a member to the Board of Trustees, an application and interview process takes place before the board votes on who to appoint. This week, we will prepare a news release for distribution and for our website with information about the appointment and the application and interview process. The application will be posted online. Citizens who are interested in the appointment will have an opportunity to complete the application and participate in the interview process. The deadline to submit an application will be 12:00 noon on Wednesday, June 16. This will give the board time to review the applications before conducting the interview process on Monday, June 21 prior to the regular board meeting. The appointment will be on the agenda for the June 21 regular meeting, with the person selected by the Board of Education joining the Gaston College Board of Trustees effective July 1. And Chairman Ramsey, that concludes the information I have for you about the appointment to the Gaston College Board of Trustees.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Of course, you're next on the agenda, and that's a resolution for My Future North Carolina attainment goal. This is an action item. Mr. Higgins?
Thank you, Chairman Ramsey. The second item I have for you is the My Future NC Resolution, and I would like to read the resolution at this time. This is a resolution from the Gaston County Board of Education, recognizing the importance of the My Future NC attainment goal. Whereas My Future NC is a statewide nonprofit organization focused on educational attainment, and it is the result of cross-sector collaboration between North Carolina leaders in education, business, and government. And whereas the My Future NC Commission has concluded that North Carolina should have a goal that 2 million of its citizens will have a quality work-related credential or post-secondary degree by 2030. And whereas Gaston County Schools is committed to providing opportunities through its career and technical education program that allow for students to obtain this knowledge, skills, and credentials necessary for success in college and the workforce. This commitment is evident as Gaston County Schools leads the state in the number of CTE credentials earned by students and the percentage of students earning more than one credential in a specific area. And whereas our public schools, working in partnership with local businesses and community leaders, are committed to advancing the educational attainment of students in Gaston County, which helps to fulfill our vision of inspiring success and a lifetime of learning. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Education is proud to support the attainment goal of My Future NC, believes that every North Carolinian should have the opportunity to earn an industry or workplace-recognized credential or post-secondary degree by 2030, and is committed to joining with leaders in business, education, government, and the community to foster meaningful partnerships that work toward achieving this important statewide goal. Be it further resolved that this resolution be made a part of the minutes of the Board of Education adopted this the 17th day of May 2021. And Chairman Ramsey, this resolution is presented to the Board of Education for consideration and approval.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Higgins. I will need a motion for that resolution. Mr. Collier, motion? Second by Ms. Cherry. Any discussions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Next on the agenda is Career and Technical Education, CTE, Local Grant Application, and this is an action item, and we have Mr. Buchanan joining us tonight.
Good afternoon, members of the Gaston County Board of Education, Chairman Ramsey, Vice Chairwoman Cherry, Dr. Booker. It's my pleasure to be here this evening. As previously mentioned, I am Brett Buchanan, the Career and Technical Education Director for Gaston County Schools. Each and every year, any local education agency in the state of North Carolina that would like to participate and receive career and technical education funds must complete a local application system grant. This just serves as our application on how we will spend the federal and state funds we receive in all of our schools. The initial planning allotment given to us is a little over $10.9 million, as you can see. There will be slight adjustments throughout the year, next year, once charter school ADMs come in, et cetera. With that being said, the CTE dollars that you see here, the little over $10.9 million, will support 22 schools worth of CTE programming. So we have almost 140 staff. That includes our teachers, and 10 high schools, 11 middle schools, and one alternative school. It will also include classroom equipment, technology, PD, and the student credentials you just heard mentioned by Mr. Higgins. So 90% of that almost $11 million will go to salaries, the rest will go to equipment, PD, et cetera. So.
No, he's changing.
Technical difficulty. So anytime you receive any grant, especially one that has a large sum of funds attached to it, there is going to be a return on investment, and that return on investment or expectation from the federal and state government is accountability, and that comes in the form of two proofs of learning. So the proofs of learning for receiving these funds are CTE and, of course, exam scores. Those are state-administered scores, excuse me, tests. And as you know, like on the core side, math, English, science, they did not count for our 1920 accountability. But our other proof of learning, which is industry-recognized certifications earned by our students, did count. And with that being said, we were number one in the state of North Carolina for student-earned industry-recognized certifications. In a 10-year span, there has always been, Wake County Schools is number one, but we changed that in the 1920 school year. So keep in mind, they are five times our size. They have five times the amount of students. So you may ask yourself, if they have 150,000 students and we have 30,000, how can we outperform them? And that goes to the second metric. We were number one in North Carolina for the percentage of student certifications earned. That means basically, all of our students that entered a credential-bearing course earned 2.19 certifications per course. On the flip side of that, when you're comparing to Wake, it's a little less than half or 50%. So really proud of what we've done, and it comes down to, again, you always hear me say, our team, our students, our staff, our teachers, they put in the work to make this happen. So ultimately, in the October work session of North Carolina State Board of Education meeting, we were recognized as the only district to ever be number one in both categories for student-earned certifications. Never happened before in a 10-year span. So hopefully, you saw one of the five billboards put out throughout the community, recognizing the accomplishment of our CTE program. We thank you for that, and it was truly a huge amount of work that went into that. Thank you. So not only did we offer exemplary programming, and that came from our teachers, students, and staff, but we also implemented some new course programming. So you think about the challenges of COVID. We had Cohort A, Cohort B, virtual learning. Well, on top of that, in CTE, we also changed from the Carl Perkins Grant Version 4 to the Carl Perkins CTE Act Version 5. That required us to also implement new programming and retire some dated programming. So we offer now carpentry, electrical, and health sciences in our middle school classes, excuse me, schools. And we also hired four new career development coordinators that have made College Foundation of North Carolina accounts for every single 6th, 7th, and 8th grader in the county. That's over 7,300 students. Now, one of the awesome things about this is not only do we have that account information shared with all of our middle and high school counselors, you can also bank their credentials that would support that My Future NC educational attainment goal. They can be banked in this CFNC accounts. So when these students graduate, that will still stick with them no matter where they go, so they can have their college applications and credentials at their fingertips. So really proud of what we've done there. If you look at the bottom-left picture, that at Bessemer Middle School, that's one of our examples of new carpentry program. In the center here at Mount Holly, we've got electrical program. And then to the right, out at Cramerton, our new health sciences program, all in the middle school, stuff that did not exist before this year. So high schools, we can't leave them out. We also offer new programming there also. So now we offer Adobe at every single high school. That pathway alone offers five certifications in that pathway. We offer network security now. It's new. Project management in all of our high schools, and this is something that has been requested by our business representatives on our business advisory council. They're always looking for project managers. New Project Lead the Way Principles of Biomedical Sciences courses out at East Gaston Health Sciences Academy, Python programming and sales. So example here, to the left, we have a quick snapshot of our students out at Project Lead the Way, new course in East Gaston. And then to the right, you can probably tell from the green, that's out of Ashbrook, and that's students that will take a, create a static cartoon image and then animate it or have it move via the software. So CTE and virtual learning, this is one of those that I think we stand head and shoulders above everyone else in the state. So when you think about the challenges that COVID created, a lot of people just, we're not going to be able to offer it because it was in-person. We took everything we did in-person and did it bigger and better than ever before, and that's virtually encountering the challenges of COVID. That's something, if you can find a county that can say that, it's going to be one in a million. So this happened by our middle school career development coordinator. So two board retreats ago, I came to you with a request to hire four new middle school career development coordinators. They were hired this year not knowing they were going to do the stuff I'm getting ready to show you they've done. So they've had to learn how to become videographers, order the equipment they need, learn how to use the equipment, use Adobe editing, video editing software. We created a YouTube channel, and they did not know they were going to be doing any of this when they got hired. So we've got some really cool things to show you here. So in the past, when it comes to registration time, we will bus all of our middle school students to their feeder high school to let them tour the high school CTE programs. Well, obviously, we could not do that this year. So these individuals I just spoke about, after learning how to get this equipment, use it, and then use the video editing software, went to all of our high schools and created virtual tours inside of all of our CTE programs. We then created a YouTube channel called it CTE TV, banked all of this digital content in YouTube, and then embedded it into Google surveys, so we could let their students view the digital content and answer questions that would populate in the same spreadsheet that's shared with the counselors that has their CFNC account information. So students could go, visit everything virtually, complete a Google survey, and then that data would populate to make sure they could get that to their counselors when it comes times for registration. So to the left, we got East Gaston High School, the Electrical Trades Program, their pipe, excuse me, their threading, some pipe conduit, and then to the right, out of Forest View High School, our Health Sciences Program. So again, something else we're known for, a signature large-scale career awareness event. In the past, we will bus 700 middle and high school students out to Gaston College. Again, we could not do that this year. So how do we make it bigger and better? We worked with our businesses and asked them if we could come onsite to them and create virtual tours inside their plants, et cetera, and then have them come online with our students live, show the digital content we created, and then have them speak to our students in a virtual Q&amp;A session. In the past, that's 700 students going to Gaston College. This year, it was over 700 virtually. And one of the other cool things that we have not been able to do in the past is survey our students to see, what did you learn from the event? To the left, we have GSM out at Bessemer High School. That's Donna Kasky talking to our students. In the center is a screenshot of our virtual tour out at Dixon. That's Crystal McCabe. They've been partners with us since the beginning of, we've been doing Manufacturing Career Expo for eight years. And then to the right is Dixon, again, out at one of our schools, talking to our students after they have had the virtual experience pre-recorded, and then someone would come on live from that company to talk to the students. So 701 responses. This is one of those grades 6 through 12. We surveyed those students, and they are brutally honest. If you've been a teacher, you give them a chance to give you an answer, they're going to tell you straight up how it is. Did you like the content presented at the Manufacturing Expo? So you're talking about businesses educating grades 6 through 12. Definitely pleased with this. Over 80% of them responded, yes, they liked the content presented. Another simple question. Please rate how well you understood the- Please rate how well you understood the presenter's information. Again, large present, excuse me, a large percentage of those students understood what was presented to them. You have businesses sometimes talking in their jargon and lingo, and then you have grades six through 12 processing it. This is definitely an overall win when you talk about all the different things that are transferring back and forth between the students and the businesses via the Q&amp;A sessions and the pre-recorded content. Students at Work, signature event we are very well-known for, probably the largest Students at Work program in the state of North Carolina. Every single eighth grader in the county, almost 2,400 students, would be bussed to local businesses to tour what they have available. Again, we could not do that this year. So how did we do it bigger and better? We worked with the Gaston Business Association. I have to give a shout-out to Steve Diavre for always working with our businesses. We had 17 businesses lined up. We went onsite to them, recorded digital content, recorded interviews with those employers, and then brought that back, made 21 videos out of it. Some of our municipalities, we cut them into police, fire, et cetera, put those 21 videos up into our YouTube channel, then embedded them into Google surveys. And on April the 22nd, which was the official day for Students at Work, we asked every eighth-grade teacher in the county to select a video of their choice, have their students view it and answer the survey questions. That was the official day. So you can probably see, well, there's way more than 2,400 student views here, so why is that? Well, this is one of the beauties of having digital content stored. Our teachers and our students are continuing to use this day after day after day. If you've ever been an educator, the gold standard of realizing you have something truly awesome and powerful is have students access this on a Friday and Saturday night. So these surveys are time-stamped. They were not required to access this information. But I've looked in some of it, and you can see them access it on a Friday and Saturday night. So that is true excitement about learning what was presented to you and wanting to view it at later hours. Took it to the next level. Students at Work is always eighth grade. Well, since we have this content of 17 businesses, and then if you've rode down any road recently in the community, you're going to see what I'm getting ready to tell you. We're hiring. We're hiring. Businesses, contact me directly. What can you do to assist us with the hiring demands that we need? We've taken these videos, asked our high school CDCs to show it to seniors, and then if they answer yes in the survey to, would you be interested in working here or an internship or apprenticeship? We connect the dots, look in the data for the yeses, give them the contact information of where and who to speak to at that business. So far, we've got 18 seniors connected to hopefully turn that into an opportunity that, without doing any of this, it would not have existed. This is just some screenshots of what you can do. It's very simple. Go to the CTE district website, look to the left, Students at Work, click on that hyperlink, and you'll see 21 videos. I've just got half of it showing here. So the number is hyperlink. That's where you can go see the digital application for that business. To the right is the total time of the video content, and then the blue hyperlink will take you to the Google survey. Example to the right is GSM. So there may be 15 minutes of content, but we've broken that down into small, manageable chunks. You'll watch a few minutes, answer some questions. That data will populate. We will have that, and then work with the student to maybe turn that into an opportunity upon graduation. One of the most interesting things about these 4,800 responses, if we've asked one question, it's an open-ended question along with the rest of the survey questions, what did you learn from what you viewed about this business? This, to me, is one of the most powerful pieces that did not happen in the past that we have digital content on, so we have it banked. So we asked our eighth-grade students, what did you learn? Some very powerful stuff here. Stanley eighth grader, Atrium, I learned that they do their very best to keep the patients safe, and that they really care for their patients. Holbrook eighth grader, Bout Bosch, that they also help kids know what they could expect after high school and be ready for college. Bloom, Chavis eighth grader, Bloom offers jobs and internships that can help you develop skills that will help you later on in life. Belmont eighth grader, Caremont, there are many career paths that you can follow while working at Caremont. A lot of students just think it's doctors and nurses. Daimler, Belmont eighth grader, I really want to do this. It seems really cool, and the things they do, I want to do as well. So just think about if we would not have shown this, that right there would have never been discovered. Southwest eighth grader, Gaston Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Colin Klenger took us on a virtual tour, let us interview him. They do not want to hurt people. They just want to keep people safe from anything that could be dangerous, but if you did something bad, you have consequences for it, and they love doing their job and helping people. That's an eighth grader response right there. That's an awesome response. Gastonian Plumbing and Heating, Greer eighth grader, they're very helpful with our community and give lots of good benefits. And finally, Cramerton eighth grader, GSM, they're dedicated to what they do, and it's a great job opportunity for people who enjoy what the company does. There's some powerful responses from eighth graders. You ever have a challenging day? 4,800 responses? We'll turn that right around. So another event we have, large-scale event we're known for, Educators in the Workplace. In the past, that's been 25 to 40 educators invited to tour eight to 10 businesses in the summer. How are we going to make that bigger and better? Well, we have four hours of business content and tours banked that we will offer at the Teaching and Learning Conference to every educator in the county. So now, K through 12, any educator can view what's available in the community, get CEU credit for it, and now they can take that back to their classroom and answer that one question you always hear, why do I need this? I know down the road at this business, they are looking for that skill set or that knowledge. That's why you need that. So in CTE, you hear me say, we connect the dots from theory to action. Overall, would like to thank you, the board, for supporting us. All of the number one, the performance, the great things we've done would not have happened without you, the superintendent, Dr. Baltknight. It's truly a team effort, and to be at the level we are operating at, it takes everyone on board in supporting us. The easy way to explain how we're going to use these funds next year is do a little better than this year. Officially, we're going to say the funds are going to be used for teacher support, staff professional development, create new digital content and virtual activity for students. I think we've just scratched the surface, and I'm really excited about what our team can do. Purchase new program equipment, technology upgrades, credential purchases, obviously, if we're number one, and we're going to continue to purchase what our students need to benefit them. And we are the lucky winners of a federal and state CTE monitoring for compliance audit next year. So my first year starting that, we had one. I guess lucky number seven, we're going to have another one. I just wanted to let you know that that is going to take place. As all I have for today, are any questions?
Okay. Any?
I want to, I want to just thank Mr. Buchanan for his leadership, but for our CDCs, all the way down to middle school. I have been in numerous middle schools where things were going on and people were dedicated to it. I've had the pleasure of touring all that was going on in Bessemer City, and it makes you just want to stop and build again. So that's a great engagement, and the kids were excited to talk about what they're doing. So that's an example of this whole program. We just appreciate what you have done in making Gaston County a leader.
Thanks, sir.
Ms. Guthrie.
I'm going to pull this over so that I can, you can hear me.
You got your mic on.
I know that it's on.
Okay, good.
First of all, I wondered if I would ever have an opportunity to talk about Johann Pestalasie, who was a Swiss reformer and educator who believed that children learn best when you took them out and allowed them to have that hands-on, and that they would be able to relate it to life skills. So I thought about you and the great philosopher standing before us. And you mentioned Wake County. Why in the world would you think Wake County would beat Gaston County? They don't have a Brett, a Brett Buchanan. We are so very proud of you because you reflect in your presentation your love for what our young people are doing and how they are using their skills to empower themselves for lifelong skills. And I like the way you have them to see that if you are willing to pour and to commit, the outcome will be something that you will enjoy doing. You've got to love what you do in order to make them love what they do. And I see that, and I feel that each and every time you present to us. So I want you to know that I am excited for you as a director here in Gaston County Schools, for the teachers whom you work with each day, and more importantly, for the warm feeling that the young people take away from the experiences that they encounter where they have an opportunity to travel, to see what can be if they apply themselves. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Cherry. Okay. Dot and dot show, I forgot.
Well, yeah, she's talking about warm feeling. What, what I love about the CTE is it places, you know, it gives, it gives our, our students a focus and, and determine what they want to do, and so many of them end up with the skills that they need to go into the fields that they love and do well in. But the other thing is, why North Carolina uses Wake County is that that bar is beyond me, beyond me. They need to use Gaston County as the bar. So, good job, Brett. Thank you, ma'am.
We're going to buy all of them.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. But, yeah, just to piggyback on that, when we met with the leadership of Gaston County Commissioners, they just broke ground on Apple Creek Business Park. So today, the secret's out that we're graduating, almost 50% of our seniors certified CTE. And the number-one thing they look for, as companies look, is see if we have workforce that's trained, knows how to run computers, equipment, CC, equipment also. So that's, you know, we all grew up when textile was king, but there's so many companies moving to Gaston County now, there's so much opportunity, and I do believe we're part of that solution. So thank you again. This is an action item. Mr. Collier?
Ms. Guthrie's made a motion. I'm second, right?
Doc made a motion. You said second, yes.
Just, Ms. Buchanan, I just remember when we started this program, and it was an incredible success. And then we started finding words to describe it from each year, and then we ran out of words because we just couldn't find words to top the words we were using. And to see where we were in those days and where we are today, even with the virtual tours, it's just blows me away because I was so proud of our success then, but where we are today is just, I can't imagine what this school, this system would be like without you and your staff's efforts for this program. I mean, we, I talked to people outside this county, and we are the envy of the state when it comes to CTE. And I'll just take this minute to thank you and your staff. It's just incredible work.
Thank you.
Before we take the vote, are we going to be able to have a signing Career Day? You can get back with me later on.
Yes, sir. That's perfect answer, yes, sir.
That's what I figured. So we do have a motion, Ms. Cherry, second by Mr. Carr. I think we've had plenty of comments and discussion. So all in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Buchanan. Next on our agenda, Exceptional Children Individual with Disability Education Act Grant. And we have Ms. Minitz. How you doing?
Good. Chairman Ramsey, Vice Chair Cherry, Superintendent Booker, and members of the board. I'm pleased to be with you tonight to talk about our federal funding grant for 2021, 2022. And I did want to start by sharing a quote with you. There we go. Money is only a tool. It will take you wherever you wish, but it will not replace you as the driver. Shared this quote recently with a group of teachers that I was meeting with because I think it's really important for us to remember that 98% of the budget that our exceptional children's department receives goes towards personnel, teachers, and support staff to help our students. And I am so proud of the work that our EC staff has done this year, most of them carrying caseloads of 30 to 40 students and serving them virtually and in-person. Most of our EC teachers stood, most of them stepped up to really do what was right for their children. And whether it be a child that needed them every day virtually, and they had those in person, or a child that they just checked on frequently and got on individually with, they all made sure that our children got what they needed for this school year. And when I talk to directors in other counties, I'm just in awe of our staff and what they have done, and I just wanted to take a moment to tell you how proud I am of all of our EC teachers and staff this year. Next, so the grant that we are submitting for approval is for $7,592,782. When we looked at the breakdown of that, $6,907,725 is for our school-aged children. So that would be kindergarten through seniors and on, up to age 22, because this does support some of our students in the Gaston Links program at Gaston College. We expect to have about $500,000 in carryover this year, and then we receive about $153,000 for pre-K and expect to have about $32,000 carryover there for next year. So that gives us our total budget of just under $7,600,000. And when you look at the breakdown for that, again, this is for positions. We pay for people out of this money, so that includes teachers, teacher assistants, our speech-language pathologists, interpreters, and support staff, which are people like our Teachers for the Visually Impaired, spoken language facilitators, our individual nurses for students that need those. It can be anything that is not a typical position that you might expect. And then our federal funds for our EC preschool program, support our EC pre-K teachers and pre-K assistants, and we have two EC pre-K classrooms in the county. So while all of our pre-K classes have some EC children in them, we have one at Springfield and one at Tryon that are only EC children in them, and so these funds support those two classrooms. Okay, a little farther down on your agenda, you will see a consent item for Envision Services, and I wanted to take just a minute to give you a little more information about that. So we would like to partner with Envision Services to provide orientation and mobility services to our visually impaired children. This helps them with things like travel skills for safety and independence, how they use their canes, how to use electronic travel aids, you know, how to go into a grocery store and find the items that they need in there. They help with evaluating the students for the services that are age-appropriate for them, and then they consult with the school staff and parents to really help the parents learn how they can help their students out in the community learn the things they need to, and then the school staff to help them gain that independence that they really strive for in their schools. And we would like to contract with them for about $27,000 for the year. And that is it for my presentation tonight. Do we have any questions?
Ms. Cherry?
Cherry, I think, on average, do we have in the links program? It's, it has grown from about eight the first year to, I think we are expecting close to 20 next year in that program. So we'll have our third cohort of students starting with us next year.
Is all the funding coming off or is it just the act?
No, Gaston College actually partners with us on that, so we provide some teachers for that program, and they provide instructors as well, because as the students progress, the first year, they're primarily with our teachers, and then they start working with the Gaston College instructors to earn their certifications. So it's a really nice partnership.
And they can stay until they're 22 or the Gaston?
They can stay until they're 22 as a student with Gaston County Schools, and that can be in one of our regular high schools or the Gaston Links. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Ms. Minitz.
First of all, I want to really thank you and the staff, EC staff, for facing an incredible challenge, and you rose to the occasion. And while we, the superintendent just mentioned in his opening remarks that we had a challenging year, I won't quote you exactly, but we have. And on top of that, your teachers had to make certain that the needs of your children whom you serve were met. And I can say that at the beginning of our pandemic, the pandemic, won't claim it, we heard from parents, but you got in there. You made an assessment. You created those strategies, those workable strategies, and you implemented them, and we didn't hear anymore. That was wonderful. So we thank you and your staff for that. Now, I know that I always enjoy coming to the graduation. Now, I know that I always enjoy coming to the graduation. And I know that I won't be able to do that this year. So will you have students graduating and then returning back to the school this year to, until they age out?
We, typically, they do not participate in graduation until they are ready to not return. So they will not, um, usually graduate and come back.
I see.
Every now and then we have one that will graduate expecting not to return and then they might come back to us, um, sometime in that next school year. But generally, it's a graduation and then, and then they're ready to move on, either to community jobs or, um, skill-based work or something like that, so.
Well, thank you for what you have done with the staff. We greatly appreciate it.
They have got a wonderful team that gets all the credit for that. They, they really did do a nice job this year.
This is the action item. Does anybody need a motion? Ms. Cherry and Ms. Guthrie, second. Any more comments or discussions? All in favor? Thank you, Cherry.
Thank you.
Next on, item on the agenda is social, emotional learning and school mental health, SBOE policy. This is an action item and we have Dr. Bocknight with us.
Good afternoon, Chairman Ramsey, Superintendent Booker, members of our Board of Education, and Chairman Chair, Vice Chair Cherry. I am happy to share with you, as we have been so excited about all the presentations tonight, about the great things that Gaston County leads across the state in. And I believe that this is one of those as well. So I'll share with you the requirements for our social, emotional learning and school mental health update. As you can see here, here is our requirement from our General Assembly as to what we are expected to do to support our students moving forward. If you look at our, this slide, this is actually our school-based mental health initiative and it breaks down the different components that each school must complete. And this is given to us by the State Board of Education. So we must conduct a needs assessment to inform plan development, promote student mental health and wellbeing, assess and improve the effectiveness of supports, provide coordinated systems of supports in school and community. And I would say to you, all of those were completed by us already, except potentially increasing our needs assessment component. So one of the things here, and you'll see all the dates. So we must, as we're doing tonight, adopt and implement and support our policies we move forward, submit a plan to Department of Public Instruction by September the 15th and then review it at least once a year. So we'll bring this back to this group at least once a year to provide updates. So, as I said, I must share the points of pride because I believe that many districts across the state are catching up with Gaston County. We already have great counselors across the district. We have a comprehensive school counseling program. They do a wonderful job with that. We have continued to focus every year on increasing our health education curriculum at the high school level and at the middle school level as well, where all the requirements in it are in at the state level. We work with human resources and we have Employee Assistance Program, EAP. We have frequently, unfortunately, used our suicide risk referral protocol. That oftentimes keeps us working late at night and over the weekend. But we have done a really good job of making sure that if a child determines they need some additional support, we don't leave them until we connect them with the appropriate mental health professional and communicate that to their parents. We're very proud of alternatives to suspension. Since 2010, we have worked really hard that if a child makes a mistake and needs to be or could be recommended for long-term suspension, we seek other alternatives so that they are not put out of school for a year and they're farther behind. We continue to support our child and family team. It is a community group that works with our children that need additional higher levels of care. They come together and meet with us and other community agencies and we determine what those supports are. We have a strong partnership with our local health providers, including our hospital. They met with us several years ago and talked about, this is the role Gaston County Schools could, could do in increasing the health rankings in Gaston County. And that's something that we've worked with, with our local hospital and others to increase. We also have a great agreement with our partner's agency, which is our local management entity. We have written grants within, to provide additional training for the district as far as the region as well. And they help us as we select mental health providers to come into our schools to support our students. We received many years ago a SAMSA grant, one of the first in the area to receive one. And that's how we were able to provide our youth and mental health first aid training several years ago. We'll go back to do that again as a refresher. But again, that's something that our community and our school district is already very familiar with. So here, three short bullets are the areas that we would like to focus on for improvement. Social, emotional learning screening tool for students and staff, core curriculum for our elementary students. We are currently using EverFi for our secondary students. And then increase our mental health professionals. And we've been able to put some, some additional mental health professionals out this year to our schools in their allotments in job postings. This is an action item that needs your approval.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Guthrie? Make a motion, second by Mr. Moore. Any discussion or comments? All in favor? Oh, you have one, Ms. Smith?
I, I don't wanna just talk, 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 but I, I need to say this to you, Dr. Bocknight. When we, when our children returned to in-person learning, I think we had a, um, curriculum instruction meeting that day. And you had some of the, uh, your staff, MTSS, to come in to talk. And I said, um, at that time, that I had my concerns about children returning to school after being out for so long. And when your staff finished with their presentation, the concerns that I had were gone because through your presentation, we were assured that the needs of every child would be met. And that I greatly appreciate. You said something tonight that I really truly liked as well. You're gonna have those alternatives to suspensions. And we know that there are skills that little Johnny may have mastered, but due to the long absence from school and maybe not having the, the guidance in his environment, he will need some extra, that extra layer of support. And through your, uh, social, uh, emotional learning program, you'll be able to afford that. So I commend you for thinking about every child and how important it is. We can't make up for the learning loss, let me just say that. But we can make certain that what we pour into our children from this day forward will be productive and the child will show, uh, growth as a result of that because you're going to eradicate as many of the ills as you can. So thank you so much for this presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. Uh, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, Dr. Bocknight.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is alternative assessment. This is Warlock Academy and this is an action item and we have Ms. Powers with us.
Good evening. My slideshow will actually cover the last two agenda items for you guys. Good evening, Chairman Ramsey, Vice Chair Cherry, members of the board and Superintendent Booker. Tonight I come to you seeking approval of the Alternative Schools Accountability Model for both Warlock Academy and Webb Street School. The Alternative Schools Accountability Model was developed in 2014, 15 to provide accountability information for eligible schools instead of these schools receiving a school performance grade. However, beginning with the 2017, '18 school year, alternative schools did begin to receive a school performance grade for specific purposes. But the alternative accountability model continues to be used when reporting accountability information. Warlock Academy and Webb Street School continue to meet the eligibility criteria to participate in the alternative model and will continue to use the same model option used in previous school years. Warlock Academy and Webb Street School will use Option B, which is the Progress Model. This Progress Model is made up of 20% of academic persistence, 20% of our achievement, and 60% of student growth. The school will receive a change rating that compares the current year to the previous year's performance. And that is all I have.
No, that's a good, that's a good model.
Yeah. So, Mr. Collier?
Mr. Chair, if it pleases the chair and the board, I'd like to just combine the two alternative assessments into one motion.
Is that good, Ms. McGraw? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the alternative assessment for both Warlock Academy and Webb Street School, presented by Ms. Powers.
Okay.
Second.
Ms. Guthrie? Second. Uh, any comments or discussion? All in favor? And it's unanimous.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. This brings us to the consent agenda. There are several items on our consent agenda tonight. Please take those items, list. Do I, do I hear a motion to approve? Mr. Dedman, motion, second by Mr. Moore. Any discussion or comments? All in favor? And it's unanimous, agenda passed. Okay, we're on some behalf. We'll hear from our superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. I do wanna thank, I, I note for the viewing public, when the report is done on operations, the report is done on curriculum, they go, wow, it just goes on and on. Well, that shows the work that is done in committees. And then when you look at our consent agenda, these items have been discussed in those committees and that's why you all have a unanimous approval. But what I wanna highlight, and Ms. Minnick just did one for you. She talked about Envision Services, a $25,000, $27,000 contract. By policy, she can approve that with my signature. But you as a board have led us to say, we want to be transparent. We want people to see how we are spending money. And so as the legislature is exploring all kinds of bills related to transparency, I, I really don't get concerned about it because you all have already required us to live that way. And I appreciate the support that you have done when you look about the sole source contracting. You have a process in place where they have to go through a procedure. It is reviewed by a third-party attorney to make sure we're meeting the sole source requirements. And so all that was on that consent agenda that you just approved. But thank you for the work that you do in those committees and it, all the staff that come in and present those, I think shows how well you work to make sure our district runs according to the policies that you've put in place. And then it keeps all of our staff remembering that we have a higher reporting authority. Earlier tonight, I, I talked about as part of the COVID report, graduation. It is graduation season and it is exciting time. And our first ceremony will be the Gaston Early College. It will be this Thursday evening. And I, I look forward to that because that is a neat ceremony and the awards that those kids get, in fact, that they have gotten, many of them a two-year degree and made choices to do that. So it's excellent. But that will begin a week of ceremonies. And we will have over the coming week, starting Thursday, leading into next Friday night, 13 different ceremonies of graduation. And I encourage all folks listening that our website will be updated later in the week once our high school principals have done the announcements to their folks to reflect about how we're gonna celebrate the class of 2021. And when you talk about celebrating, I really wanna thank the Gaston Gazette for their support of our seniors. You all hopefully have been seeing the senior spotlights that they have been running on the front page, right there on the right-hand column. And I just really appreciate them highlighting the hard work of these kids because you think about their junior and senior years and the great interruption, but magnificent things have gone on. And some of our small-town papers, the Belmont Ban or the Cherivale Eagle, they give us great coverage throughout the year and they'll dedicate their next issues to talking about their graduates. And so we appreciate that as we move forward. I know that for many of us, we're still riding around saying, is there gas available? I wanna commend our operations team. The morning, uh, that last Monday morning, we're coming in, I get calls and people, what are you gonna do about this? Call down to transportation. Sir, we, uh, we've had a policy that we try to keep two weeks. And then on Wednesday, they got a full, normal load of diesel in. They have enough diesel to, for us to operate the beginning of summer school, uh, the summer learning camps in the first week of June. So I really appreciate the leadership shown there. They also had enough gas to supply all our maintenance vehicles so they could continue to serve the school. So I really appreciate their foresight and their, the planning that they do. One of the things that we as a district have tried to do is always survey our parents. Schools do a lot of surveying, but we try to do district-wide surveying. And I just wanna let everyone know that by the end of this week, we'll be getting out surveys that will talk with our students about engagement, as well as talking to our parents about the overall operation. And we know this has been a tough year. And we just ask that they really look and evaluate those questions and give us feedback because that's how we get better by receiving those. And that, that data will be available to us as we're planning our academic year for 2021, 21, 2022. And I will say, when we think about next year, we've talked about it many times. I've seen billboards up that we've put up. We really encourage folks to preregister for next year, our pre-K and our kindergarten programs. It helps us plan. It helps us not have classrooms that all of a sudden we have to split and add classes because if we don't know about the classes, we can't staff them properly. So please, uh, join, visit our website and you can register. Any of our elementary schools are more than happy to help you with that registration. And they're gonna give you a nice, uh, placard to put in your front yard saying, my kid's going to X elementary school. So I, you know, it's just hard to believe that next Wednesday marks acaden, end of this academic year. And I would say there's been no other academic year like this. And I hope and pray there'll never be another one like this. So I want to just let everyone know that we appreciate the work that has gone on. I don't think you can say enough to some of our community partners that have stepped up. Today, when we're talking about doing away with this, we forget about last fall when everybody was trying to find masks. Everybody was trying to find PPE. And all of that, we had and we shared and, and people gave us. Uh, Operations Committee may remember, there was a point last summer where we were approached by some private healthcare folks, could we help supply some of the product we had? And they would replenish it for it because we had something they didn't have. It was truly working in the whole community. So it's easy to forget how we got here, but we did not get here easy. And Mr. Ramsey earlier thanked our teachers. I, I think of the hours our administrators have put in, the weekends trying to be there and then being there in the faculty and what they have done, the adjusted hours it has taken. So we thank everyone for that. And while the pandemic is not behind us, folks, we've still got some time to go. And the governor's still elected for schools to operate in a more restrictive thing. I appreciate our parents' patience with us. Let's get to next Wednesday. Let's wear the mask. Let's do what we have to do to be there. And I look forward to next August and Ford willing, five days a week. Bus is rolling full, sports on Friday night and a lot of fun. But this year, may not have been. This year may not have been the funnest year we've had, but I will say to this, kids have learned. If you didn't feel energy when Mr. Buchanan was talking about taking lemons and making lemonade and then improving. And I can go to each of our schools and, and show you celebrations of, of things they have done and kids they have touched. So we may not have been perfect, but our folks have worked incredibly hard. So I thank you for your support and say that our first day of school will be Monday, August 23rd. And we look forward to that academic year. And in preparation for that year, I do, uh, ask that we have a closed session for personnel, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Dedman?
I have one question from Dr. Booker. Now, I know Wednesday's the official last day of school, but Wednesday's a virtual day.
Yes, sir.
So theoretically, Tuesday is our last day of school.
And our schools are, are working through that because we have a lot of work related to that.
All right, okay. I just wanted people to make sure that they didn't think we were coming to school. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Before I ask for a motion right quick, thank you for all your time and attention. We have worked to do what's best for our student, teachers, and community. We look forward to our next regular meeting, which is currently scheduled for June 21st, 2021. I do need a motion for a closed session. Mr. Collier?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session under North Carolina General Statute 143-318, paragraph 11, A6, for personnel.
Second, Mr. Davis. All in favor? It's, we're in closed session.
We're back in open session.
Mr. Chair, I would ask respectfully that the Board of Education appoint the following individuals two-year contracts as principal administrators in Gaston County Schools: Beverly Bowman, Jennifer Cave, Laura Clark, Dr. Adair McKay, and Paige Willis.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we award a two-year administrator contract to the following individuals through June 30th of 2023: Jennifer Cave, Paige Willis, Dr. Adair McKay, Laura Clark, and Beverly Bowman.
Second by Mr. Davis. Any comments or questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract of two years for Executive Director of Student Support Services for Dr. Jill Payne.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to award a two-year contract for Executive Director of Student Support Services to Dr. Jill Payne through June 30th, 2023.
Second. Mr. Cherry, second. Any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous.
Mr. Chair, I would request that the Board of Education authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Christopher Bennett.
Mr. Collier?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to award a two-year contract for Executive Director of Middle Schools Instruction to Dr. Chris Bennett through June 30th, 2023.
Second. Ms. Cherry, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous.
Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract of two years for Executive Director of Student Support Services for Dr. Jill Payne.
Mr. Chair? Yes.
I would like to make a motion to award a two-year contract for Executive Director of Student Support Services to Dr. Jill Payne through June 30th, 2023.
Second. Ms. Cherry, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous.
Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board of Education authorize a contract for Executive Director of Student Support Services for Dr. Jill Payne.
Mr. Cherry, second. Anything else?
Members of the Board, thank you for offering and approving those contracts for those individuals. HR will be working with them to let you know we have several vacancies in the district. We have a virtual school. It is run by a number of principals filling in various roles this year. So next year, serving as principal of virtual school will be Dr. Adair McKay. We also have an early college, high school, health sciences. It will be a new early college on the Gaston College campus. And serving as the principal of that will be Beverly Bowman. And we had a retirement this year at WA Best Elementary. And Laura Clark has been serving as the interim. We will remove the interim tag from her, and she will be principal of WA Best Elementary. Paige Willis, who you just offered a contract to, will be serving at Lingerfelt Elementary. Jennifer Cave will be serving at Cherville High School. Audrey Hovis will be serving at Cherville Elementary. And Torben Ross will be serving at Holbrook Middle School. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Jill Payne. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board authorize a contract for Executive Director of Middle School Instruction for Dr. Christopher Bennett. Second. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to award a two-year contract for Executive Director of Middle Schools Instruction to Dr. Chris Bennett through June 30th, 2023. Second. Mr. Chair, any comments, questions? All in favor? Anything else?
Members of the Board, thank you for offering and approving those contracts for those individuals. HR will be working with them to let you know we have several vacancies in the district. We have a virtual school. It is run by a number of principals filling in various roles this year. So next year, serving as principal of virtual school will be Dr. Adair McKay. We also have an early college high school health sciences. There will be a new early college on the Gaston College campus. And serving as the principal of that will be Beverly Bowman. And we had a retirement this year at WA Best Elementary. And Laura Clark has been serving as the interim. We will remove the interim tag from her, and she will be principal of WA Best Elementary. Paige Willis, who you just offered a contract to, will be serving at Lingerfeld Elementary. Jennifer Cave will be serving at Yorkchester Middle School. Dr. Amy Holbrook will be moving to Greer Middle School. We have a vacancy that will become this summer at Stuart W Kramer High School. Jessica Steiner will be serving at Stuart W Kramer High School. Kevin Doran will be serving at Cramerton Middle School. Sean Hubers will be serving at Cheriville High School. Audrey Hovis will be serving at Cheriville Elementary. And Torben Ross will be serving at Holbrook Middle School. That was the moves in response to the vacancies that we currently have. We will have additional vacancies with some of the appointments that you've made of the executive directors. We will deal with those and bring those recommendations back to you in June. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. I need a motion for adjourned.
I would like to make that motion. Would you adjourn?
Mr. Dedman, need a second?
Second.
Ms. Guthrie? All in favor? We are adjourned.